Yes, I gotta see who's here. Okay, welcome everyone to the Lancaster City Council. Roll call please.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Van.
I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Christ.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris. We have a quorum.
Move to excuse Mayor Paris.
Second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jeff Burke. Jeff, are you here? Randy.
Yes.
Will you do the invocation for us?
Yes, sir. Stand with me, bow your head as I pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and Holy Spirit. God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you guide and direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us accomplish this work and these goals today. Thank you for our first responders, soldiers, leaders, that do their work so we are safe. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you Randy. Cameron. Will you come up here and help us do the pledge, please?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Cameron. Mr. Cook, where are you at?
Right here, sir.
Would you like to do the presentation?
Sure.
To Mr. Molly? Raj?
Yes, sir.
How are you? You know, this is important enough that I really do want to read this because what the city of Lancaster has done for the state of California is remarkable. So, this is a California State Resolution by the Honorable Senator Scott Thomas Wilk relative to commending the city of Lancaster. Whereas, for its distinguished record of public service and immeasurable contributions to forge and advance a number of innovative and successful private partnerships to implement progressive alternative energy initiatives and projects in the local community and state, the city of Lancaster is deserving of special public recognition and the highest commendations. And, whereas, recognized and honored regionally, nationally, and internationally as an exemplary municipal leader in the field of alternative energy, Lancaster has established itself as a global leader in creating partnerships and initiatives to mitigate the adverse effects of climate change and was the first city in the nation, the first city in the nation, to facilitate the development of affordable solar residential communities and to mandate minimum solar power requirements for all new construction and residential communities. And home to North America Electric Manufacturing Plant of Build Your Dreams, the premier manufacturer of electric buses, the city of Lancaster has also worked closely with the Antelope Valley Transit Authority to ensure that North Los Angeles County will soon have the first 100% electric bus fleet in the nation. And whereas, having proactively formed a hybrid joint powers authority, the California Choice Energy Authority to assist other municipalities while achieving their community choice aggregation goals, the city of Lancaster was also the first municipality in California become a community choice aggregator and to form its own utility service provider, Lancaster Choice Energy. And whereas, the city of Lancaster is designed as an alternative energy resource center of excellence for California, serving as a role model for the future of alternative entity and utility services and has evolved into preeminent municipal leader in the Golden State, a dynamic force striving to improve the quality of life in the local region, state, and nation. Resolved by Senators Scott Thomas Wilk that the city of Lancaster be commended for developing and implementing its community choice aggregator program applauded for the outstanding contributions made to better the environment and the lives of the countless individuals through its progressive alternative energy programs. And extended sincere best thanks for success in the future. Senator Scott Thomas Wilk.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
May I request everybody to come here and take pictures with us? Everybody, all the council, please?
Just get a picture.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Rick, don't run away. Donna, can I have you down there?
And? Coach Aaron? I'm gonna have, is Mr. Hockford here? Steve Kuhn?
We have certificates for all the girls. Can we have all the girls come down? Coach, you wanna tell us a little bit about it?
I, um, I coach American Warriors. They're a team, a soccer team out of Coors Hill. There are 10 new girls. They're all eight, nine-year-old girls. They went this year 25-0. They won the Western States Championship, which means they're the best team in four states. Nobody could beat us, so. And out of Coors Hill, we don't even know if anybody's done this level before, and it's been quite a commitment for these young girls and very, very proud of each and every one of them, so.
You go, girls!
On behalf of the California State Senate, to make us one of the best soccer girls teams in California, congratulations.
In the nation.
In the nation.
In the nation!
Wow, on behalf of Supervisor Barker from Los Angeles County, thanks for putting us on the map! Woo! Congratulations! Keep up the good work, and you too, Coach. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Steve, you wanna say a few words? I know that, and that means a few words.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I just, I would just want to the Berserk grandpa standing there trying not to have a heart attack as these girls went all the way through. I mean, it's really amazing when you think about it, undefeated, and then when they got to the playoffs, every, every step of the game was tied. They had to go into overtime, and they tied, and they went to a shootout, and it was, and then they finally won in the shootout. At the final game, they did the same thing all the way up to the end, and, and they had to do a sudden death shootout in order to win it. So, you know, I think most of the blood pressures on the parents and grandparents are back to normal now, and, but it's just amazing watching these girls every time, just the, the heart that they put into this was just amazing, and, and the coach, and the other parents here, they just encourage these girls all the way along. We brought them in over Palmdale a couple of weeks ago, and when they had made the regional, the sectional, and we saved this and, and all the other certificates for them. Keeping our fingers crossed for tonight, and it's just amazing what they did.
We have Isaac here from Congressman Knight. You wanna?
Absolutely.
We'll pull the certificates out.
Okay. I wanted to congratulate you on behalf of Congressman Knight, and on behalf of myself. All of my kids played soccer, and congratulations. The lessons you learn and the values you learn in sports will help you your whole life, and this is quite an achievement, and congratulations to you, and more success always. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the city of Lancaster, we're gonna present you all the certificates at one time. I'll give you the congressmen's, and then you can pass them out, but these have been put together, so you can give it to them, and can you give them their certificates? We'll give them to you. Are they, you wanna?
Well, the names are listed, so.
Yeah, the names are listed. No, the names are listed right there for you.
Yeah, they're in order. Except for, except for the, Isaac. So, start off with.
Oh, you want me to call? I think maybe he should call the names because he'll know the kids' pronunciations better. I don't want, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to offend a young woman's, uh...
That's why he's up here. Adriana Hordan.
Thank you.
Are these in the same order? Are these in the same order?
I think they're in the name.
Avery Freeman.
Congratulations!
Coach, you just need to read from the list, they're in order, except for Congressman Knight's.
Sorry. Cameron Freeman.
Yay, sisters! Congratulations!
Natalie Davis. Abigail Kirsten. Sophia. I know. Samantha Miller.
Samantha, congrats!
Sydney Mitchell. Nicole Finn. Can we get all the young girls back over here? We'll take a picture. Donna?
Get the adults in the back row, you know, and you guys, come on over here, right in the center here.
Probably has me.
I got it.
You know, we have one more cert to give out. Can we have all the friends and family that would like a picture down here? Come on down. Come on down. Come on, you're part of the group.
I can tell which one was your daughter, huh?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Come on right in here. We have a spot for you in the middle. Go. Except for Steve.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
You mind if I have you, babe?
Get him, babe. Well, we're not important at this point, Jesus. No. It's what the family does.
We're super short, I know. I don't know. We're like, really short. Sorry, that's fine. Sideways and forward a little, maybe?
Joe, you wanna tell them where those pictures will be available? You can give it to them. I have yours. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, Mark. You can say nice things about us.
Is this non-agendaist? Non-agendaist?
On the air show? We have so many champions in the valley. We have, you know, a good group of young people coming forward. Mark, you're gonna do the recognition of Rhonda?
Yes, I am. Rhonda, if you would come up, I know that you hate that. How about Finn is? Come on up. Hey, come on.
These are Rhonda and Tony's kids, Isabella and Finn, to give them a hand. And last week, we had the distinct honor of going to the Zonta Athena Award presentation with Rhonda's mother and father. Rhonda was one of the nominees among a really great group of women leaders in the Antelope Valley. All of them have done a tremendous amount of work and tremendous amount for the Antelope Valley, as has Rhonda. Rhonda was sure she was not gonna win. She did not prepare a speech. She did not do anything, and this is your 2018 Athena Award winner. It was one of the prouder days I've had at the city, not in a personal sense, but just as a city, because promoting great leadership in the Antelope Valley is part of what government should be doing, and people like Rhonda and all of our department heads and such exemplify leadership, and we in the city of Lancaster have a very diverse leadership team, gender, racially, everything, and we are very proud of that, and we're better for it. But Rhonda was given the award not just for what she does for the city of Lancaster, but what she does for the community. She is tireless in her efforts, whether it's the airshow that just completed or anything else. She does a wonderful job and is a great representative of this city council and mayor. So, please give her a hand.
This'll be twice in a week that I didn't prepare a speech. I'll just reiterate some of the things I said last Thursday. I was truly humbled to be provided with the award the night that so many great women were there. It's, it's truly an honor for me, and I'll, I'll reiterate a story I told that night. I was meeting with a friend about a year ago who's just moved down to Temecula, and we were talking about Temecula, wow, do you like it down there? And she says, "Yeah, yeah, it's, it's beautiful, it's nice." And I sensed something in her voice, and I said, "But what?" And she said, "It's not Lancaster. The community that's in Lancaster is tremendous. I miss it so much, and I am proud to be a representative of this community, and I'm very humbled to receive this award, but a lot goes into that, and I don't stand up here alone. My parents and my family put up with the very late nights and the very long weekends, and that staff back there that's made me successful. So, really, thank you to all of them and my family. Council and Mark, thank you as well."
Can we have the council come down? Park staff, mom and dad, we're gonna get one big picture. Come on, stand up. Someone's gotta lead. Oh, I think we got, I didn't even think you were gonna get it.
It's not mine.
Oh, it's not yours? No speech, though. You got the trophy?
He made me bring the trophy.
Only for Finn.
They don't get much wider than you here. Probably three rows ago. They're tall and they're long, so you go towards the back if you don't mind. We're gonna have you in front. We're gonna have you in front. We're gonna have you in front. Front to front. Somebody in front. You're good. There you go.
Mark, is there anything to be removed?
Yes, we would ask that CC4 be renewed, removed, and scheduled for future date, and we are sorry for any inconvenience that may cause anyone.
Okay. David, you have a card for CC4? We'll go ahead and pull it. Okay, council minutes? You need a motion and second for the council?
I'll make a motion to accept council minutes.
I'll second.
Let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. Consent calendar, we pulled CC4. We have, we'll pull CC10.
With that, then, I'll make a motion to accept the, excuse me, the consent calendar is comprised, removing CC4 and CC10.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we pulled CC4, CC10, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. CC10, Michael. Go ahead.
He broke it.
It's going up.
No, it's, it's going up.
It broke it. Do you have any jokes you can tell?
There you go. Thank you, Mark. Vice Mayor, Council, Staff, fellow citizens. I'm speaking tonight on CC10. You want to form a partnership with Lamar Central Outdoor with their signs, and they want to transfer some signs. I looked at the agreement in the book from the clerk's office, and it's just briefly, may I suggest that this go back to the city manager's office and the understanding be rewritten that if we were gonna partner with Lamar, that their signs are commandeered by the city of Lancaster in the event of emergency, and we can take possession of the signs and put whatever we want for the benefit of the citizens. I, I think that would be a good idea, and I wish the council would think about it in the city manager's office. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I need a motion for CC10.
I'll make a motion to approve CC10 as comprised.
I second that.
We have a motion, second, let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. Are they here?
They're not here. She's still stuck in traffic, so I'd suggest going through the rest.
We'll go to NB2. Lee?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Christ, Council. What I want to talk about today, and what is on your agenda, is to give you a little update on where we are in our process of the juvenile justice system as it relates to intervention and diversion. Recently, some information came to light that the Department of Probation for Los Angeles County is gonna be actually shutting down a couple more facilities for detention. One of the ones being considered as well is Challenger here locally for detention. And also based on that, there's some discussion going on, on who is going to handle diversion processes as the youth enter into the juvenile justice system and diverting those cases away from the actual juvenile court. So, I just want to give you some background here. Youth under the age 18 who are accused of committing delinquent or criminal acts are typically processed through the juvenile justice system. So, the mindset is the juvenile justice system is inherently different than it is in the adult system as the process takes place, with the idea being that juveniles, there's, they're different than adults as it relates to criminality, it's more of consideration of delinquency, and then there's other things that are more not criminal-related, purely delinquent, like curfew or daytime truancy or those type of issues. Now, some interesting things that look, during a single year in the United States, 2.1 million youth under the age 18 are arrested in the United States. The overall rates have been declining over the past years, approximately 1.7 million delinquency cases are disposed in juvenile courts annually, so that you can think about, that's a significant number of folks that without diversion processes and everything that in place and growing that number will have a financial impact on the communities, not to mention what it does for those youth offenders. And there's different types of cases that typically come across nationally. Last year, 24% of those offenses were against the person, so crimes against the person, so those are more significant issues like robberies, assaults, that type of thing. 37% were property crimes, 11% were drug law violations, and 27 of those were public order offenses. Those would be the ones I'm talking about for truancy, underage drinking, those type of things. And typically, juvenile delinquency follows a trajectory path similar to adolescence, and that's typically, as you look at through the offenses, and as what we're seeing now, is we're seeing youth coming into a process for detention as young as fifth grade. So, our youth offenders are becoming younger, and the offenses they are committing are more egregious and more criminally based rather than just delinquency. So, based on that, we've run the process through with our collaboration with Antelope Valley Union High School District with the AVA program, with our Antelope Valley Education Alliance. That program is specifically designed as an early intervention process of those kids that have been identified at risk. It primarily started as a truancy program, and then it's blossomed into all these other issues as it relates to service providers and things for these kids and their families. But we're seeing now that our targeted range needs to be lower. So, what I'm bringing forward tonight is to have the opportunity to approach our, our elementary schools, our school boards at the elementary districts, as well as the administration of those districts, to develop an early intervention program for those, those age groups, junior high, and possibly as low as sixth grade, only from the mindset of getting a hold of these kids and bringing them into a process when they already are identified as having issues at that age, and bring the family together and come up with alternatives to that behavior. A lot of that is now, as we're, as kids are coming into high school, we're predetermining from that summer before based on their attendance through K through 8, and what type of issues have occurred through discipline, and seeing that we've already identified some folks that if we had gotten to them at a prior, earlier time, may have had some impact on the change of behavior. The other side of that is, is that studies show that anytime we develop intervention programs at a younger age, it has a dollar and cents aspect of it, whereas you will save $7 to $10 for every dollar you spend on that intervention program just later on for, by dealing with the criminal justice process and incarceration. So, along with that is, we have to obviously develop a greater parameters for our diversionary programs. Typically, now, what's happening now in, as it relates to the schools, is that kids are doing basically Saturday school. So, they're doing a comm, a community service program that's strictly related to the education code and the recovery of average daily attendance. And what I'm proposing to the council and for consideration is to expand that community service process for diversion, along with working, with community-based programs that already exist here that are currently contracted with probation and providers out there, since probation is going to take a step back from diversion. there, since probation is going to take a step back from diversion in a certain amount, that we're going to still need those programs out there. Just for an example, with taking aside just the truancy citations at each school from the truant officers at the school, just patrol at our station had 27 youth, juvenile offender detentions just last month, and over 50 citations for juvenile delinquency behavior in our city. And that's excluding the issues at the schools and by the school program. So you can see that we have do that over a period of time. It would be our benefit to eliminate those things occurring in our community at much younger age. So, some effective programs for intervention are classroom and behavior management programs, multi-component classroom-based programs, social competence and promotion curriculums, conflict resolution and violence prevention curriculum. So it's the things we can work through the school. We already have a significant bullying prevention programs that exist within our schools, after-school recreation programs, and this is a big one, is school-organized programs and comprehensive community interventions. So we can work with our community groups to develop identifiers outside of the school process that involve the family to change behavior. And what do diversion programs look like? Currently for us, we're working through a screening assessment process that, that we've brought to you before on how we do the intake for, uh, the youth that have been identified as needing some type of intervention, how we assess what those issues are, what may be occurring in the family. And then we look at how to do that community outreach to those service organizations that already exist and providers to help intervene in, into that system, even if it comes down to just basic parenting skills, those type of issues and parent responsibility. So, um, what I've tasked the folks that are already working with us in public safety with is developing a program that could be identified that's appropriate for that younger age group. Okay, and that's something currently we're trying to put together for presentation, something we'd like to, we're going to be continuing work on through the summer and hopefully have something in place that's appropriate with collaborative partnership with the school system locally with the three, um, K through eight districts that exist here in our city, along with expansion in the high school district.
Are you running this through the criminal justice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm, I think it's good. I am a little dismayed that they're pulling out. Why are they?
I believe that there's some discussion, and this, it's not done yet, and it's just discussion from individuals I know within the probation department. And some of the discussion that's taken place at the Board of Supervisors meetings, that they think it's a more appropriate intervention and diversion model for that to be done with community-based organizations outside the juvenile justice process with probation.
Are we going to receive that money that they would normally put into?
My understanding is they're sitting on a significant amount of diversion money as it exists now, and as that process moves forward, I'm sure there will be a point where there maybe be an RFP or for what community-based organizations or agencies that will be involved in that process.
Okay. Donna?
Pardon me?
Want to be first in line? Okay.
We're looking at a lot of different sort of, uh, models and repurposing of facilities and...
Come on up and talk to us.
It's really, no, it's really early, early stages. I've, I've said it on one briefing about, um, the, uh, change and transition into youth diversion, and we've been looking at, uh, several, uh, models and programs and how that's going to look. It's still early stages, but we'll be hearing more about it and the repurposing of the facility.
Can you make sure Mr. Derico is in those meetings?
Absolutely.
And can you make sure that he has some status there that?
Sure.
He'll be heard.
As, as I have more information, I'll certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for me?
Any questions? Questions?
No, just get our fair share of the money.
All right, sir. I'll fight for it. Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. So there's no vote on this. We'll go to NB3. I have no speaker cards.
Well, then I'll make a motion to, uh, accept Public Works Construction Project 18-003 for Cole Middle School in Terrabonita.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, let's vote. Motion carries 4-0. We'll do the nomination and, uh, appointments. The mayor has nominated Sylvia Donovan and Daniel Truffs to the Lancaster Architectural and Design Commission. Are they here?
I do not believe Sylvia is here.
If I may, before we, uh, call for the motion of both Sylvia and Daniel, I, I do want to make sure for the record, everybody understands that Sylvia was one of the original four that came up with the brainchild of the downtown Boulevard with the City of Lancaster. You know, Sylvia's got some background, obviously, historically with planning, so I think she's an excellent choice. And if she was here, I would, uh, embarrass the heck out of her, but, but I do want to let you know that when it was originally presented, uh, about the makeover on the Boulevard, Sylvia was one of the individuals that was involved, so I appreciate her so much. So with that, I, I guess I'll make a motion then.
You can second the motion. The mayor makes the nomination.
That's right.
And then, uh, so let's vote on, do we, can we do them both at the same time?
Can we take them to collective?
Yes, you may.
So let's vote on both of them, on CCA. Motion carries 4-0. We have NB1, we're, uh, waiting for some guests to arrive, so that's why we're, uh, taking it out of order in that. So we'll give the, uh, the reports. Angela, would you like to talk about? Um, the Board of Directors, the Antelope Valley Transit Authority, um, we're now going to make a straight. They were told today, the staff was told, that we would like a bus that goes from the Palmdale, the new college facility, straight to the AVC, the 30th Street. So instead of taking three different transfers, uh, we want a straight-line bus. It will be operational in the fall. So that was given today. We also met with about 100 veterans today. Me and Mr. Molly met with the veterans and, uh, explained to them how the free service works on the Antelope Valley Transit Authority. I thought it was a very good, uh, thing. Mr. Molly meets with them, uh, every Tuesday. He invited me to attend and to, uh, tell them, we haven't been doing a good enough job to tell the veterans and the seniors, uh, all the benefits that are due to them. So we're going to, uh, start doing a better job with that. AVTA did hand out, uh, free bus passes to the veterans that were there. So there was a little over 100 veterans, uh, there today, and they were very interested, and so they all did a good job. Raj, you want to talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, the last couple of times I was there, and then most of them, they didn't know, but so I think you did a really good job today, and, uh, staff, they gave deep, I think enough detail about all the veterans and senior citizens and handicapped and students. They can all ride free in the AVTA, and that's a great thing to have in our community. So I think that was really good that, you know, you did a good job. Thank you for that. And also wanted to, um, let, you know, last, uh, last week, we got Mark Bozigan and Jason and I, we had an opportunity to go to Sacramento. So we met with Scott Wilk and Tom Leckie. We talked about, uh, Calwater and the CCA. It was a great, I, I thought it was worth going there and talk about and, you know, taking, talking about our community. So I wanted to thank you, Mark, and just going with me, and, uh, Scott is doing a great job up there. Just wanted to thank you, especially Scott Wilk and Tom Leckie as well, for what they're doing for our community, so.
Well, Scott Wilks was also at the, uh, uh, veterans thing today, and he did suggest that we waive any additional fees, um, from AVTA for the veterans. We took that to the board today, and, uh, although we couldn't take action, we did direct, staff to make that, uh, come true. So, uh, the additional, uh, fees were waived, and, uh, Scott made that, uh, suggestion, so we took that back and, uh, made it happen today. Ken, you want to talk about the AVA QMD?
Yeah, in our most recent meeting, we had the annual review in regards to the audit of the AQMD Board, and pleased to, to say that we had another great year where we, uh, passed the audit with flying colors. And then also too, what was on the agenda and passed was, uh, the lawnmower program that both the cities and the county, uh, does every year, and there should be more information coming out. But everybody should be aware that one of the things that we do from the AQMD Board is we try to retire, uh, all the old gasoline lawnmower engines out there, swap them out for, uh, green lawnmowers. And, and did I hear that correct? That a lawnmower produces the same amount of carb?
It's seven, pollutes seven times more than a, a normal car.
Yeah, so, so to clarify, a lawnmower that you would use to mow your lawn produces seven times the carbon output as an automobile does. I mean, I, that's just, I, you know, you think small and you, what the heck? So we, we clearly want to encourage people, uh, in the Antelope Valley to take an opportunity to bring that mower. What happens is, is the mower gets scrapped, and I believe it was $250 that we give towards, certificate towards the purchase of a, what we call a green lawnmower, electric lawnmower.
It depends on the, the lawnmower that they actually choose.
Yeah, so historically, it'd been one model. I think this year, it actually went to a larger group, so I think there's like 20-some brands, so there's one specific that you get the larger contribution, and then the, the certificate to, to purchase the lawnmower is graduated based on the value of the lawnmower. So, more to come. That'll be, uh, you, you should see something in the newspaper, and there'll be public notices put out. And typically, we do a one-day event here in Lancaster, and then there's a one-day event that's done in the city of Palmdale as well.
We also joined in at the AVA QMD with the Rural Town Councils, and at the Rural Town Councils, uh, we, uh, joined in together to apply for grants so that we would have more power, they would have more influence, and that we're trying to get and, uh, look at, uh, for the Valley Fever. So, um, there's a new pot of money out there, and, uh, we'll be going after it. So, with that, um... Mark, you want to do your announcements?
Thank you. We have three things. The first one I'd like to ask, Rhonda Perez, to talk a little bit about the air show and some of the, uh, things that went on and such. I know that Council is out there and freezing, so I'm sure you have stories too. I know Angela does.
Thank you, Mark. This past weekend, we celebrated the 5th Annual Los Angeles County Air Show. It was a tremendous success. We were a little concerned not having the Blue Angels or the Thunderbirds here this year, but the F-22 put on a stellar show, so we were very, very proud of that. And we were also very fortunate to declassify, um, a UAV Lockheed, uh, the X-44 at our site this past weekend. So that was really special, and that actually, we were pleased to see that our ticket sales and our attendance was up despite a little bit of a breezy weekend, um, and a little bit of a cold weekend. But more importantly than that... More importantly than that, again, going back to the team that helps put that on through Development Services and the Parks Department and everybody else that volunteers to come out, it was a tremendous undertaking. We had a little bit of a challenge on Saturday with, um, some food, and in about 12 hours, uh, our staff, along with some volunteers, fed 4,000 people on Sunday that we were not expecting to feed. So that was a tremendous accomplishment, and I do want to thank Viata for bringing in a staff of people to every single Viata in the Antelope Valley and cooking 12,000 tacos in 12 hours between Saturday night and Sunday morning. So, um, very pleased to partner with them. Thank you.
I see you have some of your representatives from the air show. Did you want to thank them, or?
We always thank, we always thank Look Up and the Fragoso Sisters. Thank you for being here. They're actually here for the next thing.
Oh, okay.
Thank, thank you, and thank you all for being there. It was a really good event. Next, uh, news, press release will go out tomorrow, but Supervisor Barker today got through the Board of Supervisors to extend the homeless shelter emergency or crisis in the Antelope Valley. And what that means is the, um, shelter that's being run by the Salvation Army on, uh, Avenue I and 60th will remain open through October, correct? Through October, 24/7. The important thing, and in the press release, as Catherine said, it's not just a shelter, it gives people hope, and there's a full range of services. It's a 24/7 facility that people can be there, get the hope they want, um, uh, learn how to get subsidies for housing, get help with the jobs. So it's not the same 93 people, it's serving people over and over again. And, uh, our supervisor's done an absolutely tremendous job of really taking the lead in the Antelope Valley, um, with the City Council in dealing with the homeless situation. So thank you to Supervisor Barker. Lastly, we have a, uh, video on National Band Saw. It's a company in our community. I think the important thing, and Vice Mayor Chris alluded to this during the Board of Trade, it's not just a company relocates here. Just like you don't buy a house and just do the same things, you buy a house to improve your lot for your family, whatever. Businesses come here not just to relocate, but to excel. So watch, especially at the end, what moving to the Antelope Valley in Lancaster has done to help this business increase its sales and its profile.
When you walk into a restaurant or a sandwich shop, you're probably going to see some food processing equipment that looks something like this. Well, when something goes wrong, who makes the replacement part? Well, that would be National Band Saw, who about a year ago opened up this huge facility on Avenue L-12 in Lancaster.
We are manufacturers and distributors of machinery and replacement parts for industrial food processing equipment.
That's got to include a lot of machines.
We manufacture parts for many different pieces of equipment, probably overall, maybe 15 to 20 different pieces of equipment, perhaps even more. We also are distributors now for a myriad of equipment that are used everywhere, from meatpacking plants, any kind of, uh, little restaurants.
And made in America.
We make it here in this country. In fact, we do our absolute utmost to keep our supplier chain within 100-mile radius of this business right here. My father and I were here together for 41 years. My dad retired about six or so, seven years ago.
So you're in Santa Clarita, you're in the business park, an established business park, but it's time to grow. How did you end up here?
Our Valencia facility was about 12,000 feet, and we needed more space. We found this building and decided, okay, we're going to make the move, and it was very scary. We don't know how our suppliers are going to like coming up here, how this is going to work. We moved, and it has been a terrific experience.
Can you walk us around?
Be happy to. This is the main warehouse, the only warehouse, the warehouse. These are our parts. This is everything we make.
2,700 parts are out here, okay.
And they're up, down, and around, they're in all these bins, they're, you name it, they're all over the place.
And so what do you call this room?
The OEM room, the test, the test room.
So what's he doing over here?
I don't know. I'm just, this is Julio. Julio's been with us for about 30 years.
How did you like to move out to Lancaster?
Oh, I like here, and I moved here, now I live here.
Oh, really? So they moved the company, and you came out?
Yes.
This is our machine shop.
This is a part, goes on a Hobart saw that basically lifts the top reel to put tension on the blade.
That's what it looks like when it's done. So I'm going to start off with a half-inch hole, and then I'm going to open it up, and then I'm going to thread it.
What room is this?
This is our all-new test kitchen. Since we've moved here from Valencia about a year ago, we've not had the opportunity to show the customer what we actually do. By moving to Lancaster in this facility, 20,000-plus square feet, we've been able to show the customer, not only show them what we have, what we do, our new products, and the customers. customer can test out what they want on their own time, by themselves or with a customer.
What's this all about?
Basically, what we got going over here is it's a part of our new distribution center and partnerships that we've created. Coming up here to Lancaster, we've been able to actually partner in with a bunch of the distributors, and we now can offer the machines. We've got partnerships with Sermon, Omcan. We've got ability to get into the Heat Seal machines, Scales, Cast Scales has become a big partner, along with our Turbo Chef partnership that we have created.
In the year we've been here, we have had just a great experience of business. It's easy to do business here in Lancaster.
It reminds me that we did meet with the REV, me and you met with the REV distributors, and REV is the company that actually bought Lance Campers. AVTA asked them, me and Mark sat down and asked them if they could provide us with an electric van. We went from electric van that would seat five people to an electric van that will seat 10 people. So we will be starting that service to Mojave and to Edwards Air Force Base with the larger vans, so it's more economical for everybody. So having REV here is great. Hopefully, they'll build everything here, so we'll still be able to buy everything local. Okay, we're going to go back to NB1. Rhonda.
Good evening, my Vice Mayor Marvin and Council. I'm here this evening to provide you an update as to the status of the Owen Park Memorial that is currently still in its conceptual phases. Tonight, we're going to talk about the process we took to get us here tonight, as well as request your feedback and comments, and discuss the next steps for the memorial project. After Steve Owen was tragically killed in the line of duty, council voted to rename the city's flagship park after our local hero. At that time, you also requested that we construct a memorial in his honor that was more than just a plaque, something that really speaks to the community, something that will tell the story of the man that he was for generations to come. The goal being that 20 years from now, when kids like mine come into the park, they understand why he was so important to this community, the contributions that he's made, and why we renamed our Lancaster City Park Sergeant Steve Owen Memorial Park. Sergeant Owen, in our opinion, was a very spiritual man. He was very heavily involved in the community and in many local youth programs. Through the partnership that we have with Learn for Life, we thought this was the perfect opportunity to include their students in the design of this new memorial, to ensure we appropriately and accurately recognize his service and sacrifice through the actual eyes of the community members that he served. So last August, we met with Learn for Life and met with the students to begin designing the memorial. We also have included Sergeant Owen's family in the creative process to ensure that we honor him in the best way possible. The students, some of which are here tonight, interviewed various friends and family to really get an understanding of the man that he was, and to make sure that everything was accurately represented in this process. So now, I would like to introduce a short video, sort of detailing the last few months, what we've been working on. And then that will be followed by a short presentation by Learn from Life, Learn for Life, rather. And then we will close with some comments from Tanya, who is here representing the entire Owen family this evening.
He was a man that was bigger than life. He inspired many people to do good in a positive way, and he was a role model, and nothing short of a hero.
Upon his passing, our city council really wanted to pay honor to him.
We're working on redesigning the parks and creating a memorial for Sergeant Steve Owen so that people from future generations will come here and know who he was.
The monument, I think, is significant of trying to capture his essence, his character, his personality, to hopefully maybe inspire them to do good things.
Just seeing how excited they get and how involved they get into something like this and present it on such a high level, and knowing that it's something that's really helping the community. And I think the kids thoroughly enjoy it, and that's probably the most rewarding part.
The students that we're working with in this project wanted to just be able to give back and to say, hey, I participated in this community event.
Working with everyone is great. We kind of bounce ideas off each other. It's awesome to hear what people are thinking and what they plan.
For me, it's just, you know, a big thank you to Sergeant Steve Owen. Doing this is kind of like thanking him and helping out the community, myself, along with the help of my friends at the school.
I want people to be proud of what Sergeant Steve Owen has done for this community and to really see how he impacted so many people.
Get goosebumps with that, but thank you. Yeah, we're very fortunate to have this great opportunity with the city through Learn for Life and the city's partnership. And who better to bring this to life? We talk about the generations than the kids that live in our community and the kids that will have their kids come to this park 20 years from now. So that's really, we wanted them to bring their generation into it, but they definitely spent the first week, the process, as we set it up, learning everything they could about who he was and what he did and what he stood for. And it was a great opportunity for the kids. We pulled in a lot of different kids from different art programs to be a part of this. There was definitely some that stayed and got committed and really enjoyed it. There are a few here tonight, and we're very proud of them. We will show you a rendering and some of the concepts we have for this project.
Can you introduce yourself? I saw your name was Noah.
Noah Cook, yeah, I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you, Noah Cook at Learn for Life. Just got a little emotional with that video, but this is a rendering. We got four walls representing youth, community, family, and hope, which all definitely represented Sergeant Steve Owen. And the symbol here in the middle, the star, which we will put a dedication plaque that will kind of tell his life story as well. And then we went through many concepts, and there was, you know, drafts, and obviously the kids came up with, just let the creative juices flow, and this is kind of what came out of it. But really, this is his horse from a picture. We did decide to go with the boots and the stirrups backwards to represent a more powerful overall concept of the deputies and officers who have, you know, fallen in the line of duty. But, you know, depicting the walls and with the images within the walls and quotes will definitely tell his story to represent the park. I think that's about it, everything I could go over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya, would you like to come down?
Good evening, council members and Vice Mayor. It's truly a pleasure for me to be here. And Captain, we saw each other earlier today. As you all know, I really try to keep myself composed anytime I have to address the public. But after seeing my husband's picture up on the, on the screen.
Take your time.
It was hard.
Introduce your dog for us.
This is Tank, and really, the reason I'm here in uniform today was because today has been a very emotional day for me. I'm retiring today after 32 years of service with the county. And combined with my husband, we're talking over, what, 60 years of service at the county. You know, I can honestly tell you that there's no regrets whatsoever. I've had an incredible career. It just really saddens me that I have to leave such an incredible family, but we all must move forward. And the only person that's missing here is my husband. We should be retiring together.
Can we bring the rest of your family down?
Absolutely. Come on, Shannon. My daughter Shannon's here, and come on, Parker. And this is Parker Driscoll. He's a deputy at Lancaster Station. We keep it in the family. So, and unfortunately, my boys couldn't be here, but nevertheless, they are here in spirit. So it really gives me just an incredible honor, and I feel very humbled that the city and that the community and these fine young men and women have worked so diligently to make this happen. You know, we always think of sports figures or others as heroes, and really, to have a layperson such as my husband that really has worked for the community, really for the love of the community and nothing else, it's really, just, it's so meaningful to our family. And to just hear that the children in the future will get to know who Sergeant Steve Owen was, it's pretty incredible. So I applaud the, the help for, I'm sorry, Learn for Life, I'm sorry. I applaud Learn for Life organization and the young men and women for taking on this endeavor and really making this, hopefully making this happen. It's a beautiful tribute, and I know that Steve would be, would be very happy and of course, just very humbled by it.
Do you like it?
Beautiful, I love it. The concept is incredible, and it really looks to me like it would be a very nice place for just someone who just needs a little time to just, you know, just relax and be able to think about something outside of having to deal with everyday issues and just to sit there and be at peace. That's what it looks like to me, very peaceful.
It looks nice.
Yes.
It looks, thank you for your service. Thank you for, you know, what your entire family has done for the community, and, you know, we really appreciate it, and we're sorry to see you go.
Thank you, sir.
We hear you already have another job.
Uh-huh, I've had a few offers, but really, the bottom line is I want to be available for my church and maybe go on some missions. I've already been asked to go to Thailand in September for a mission, so I don't know.
Well, great.
I'm praying about it, you know?
Great, that's good.
Kind of scary, right? But definitely it would be.
She does pretty good with Tank, huh?
Yeah.
We could have you spend a little bit of time with Marvin, and maybe we could get him a little.
Well, I'll tell you what, I feel, I feel very, very lucky because.
If it was a drug dog, it would have learned on Ken.
Tank is only three years old, and he really should go to another handler. But, you know, the department has allowed me to keep him really in memory of Steve. And there's really a lot more that goes to really having this, this dog with me in my life. And that's because on the day that Steve was murdered, October 5th, 2016, he and I were in Palm Springs trying to become certified as partners, and that was day one of three. Well, because of what happened, of course, we were never able to certify as a team until later. And so he's pretty much been my therapy dog. He's been my constant companion, and he's probably about the only one that's seen me fall apart and, you know, he's been with me, so I feel very fortunate to have him.
Beautiful dog.
Have him retire with me, so. But thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for allowing us to come up here and speak with you all. It's really a privilege and an honor. And he loves, yes, he's a lover.
He's not a loving, he's loving.
Shannon, did you want to say anything?
The rendering of the horse is actually an actual picture. My dad was sitting on him. And my dad absolutely loved that horse. He loved all of our horses. I mean, it was a huge part of his life. So I think just that alone, I mean, it doesn't, it's not even a statue of my dad or anything, but that holds so much meaning to me.
This would be okay?
Yes, just, just the horse and everything around it, that says a lot.
Okay, great. That's good to know. That's what we needed to know. So thank you guys for making the trip up here.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Parker, did you want to say anything?
I really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
So thank you so much, Owen family and Learn for Life for being such a tremendous part of this. That concludes our presentation, and we'd like to open it up to your feedback and questions. We can talk about that. So next steps, this, we have had this preliminarily scoped for price, and it comes in just over $200,000 to make this investment. I understand that the Sheriff Boosters are also raising money for this program. And we, the next steps would be to solicit sponsorships and donations in the community. It is our recommendation as staff for the city of Lancaster that the city would donate dollar for dollar any match that's raised in the community between those sponsorships and donations.
What is the horse made of? What is, what's the graffiti part of it? That's what I would like to know, the, I don't want it graffitied or?
Sure, so we, the walls will have graffiti coating on them quite naturally. We're actually kind of excited, we're in conversations with Scaled Composites to make this horse out of something more unique than bronze, which kind of aids in what we try to do here in the city anyway, make things differently, do things differently, be the first. So we've got some meetings scheduled with Scaled in the next couple of weeks to see what that might look like. And our conversation will include those measures to make sure that it, they would include things that make it difficult to climb or deface or vandalize.
Okay, great, great. Okay, are we going to make it clear to the community some way, how they can donate and what they're donating to?
Yeah, based on the conversation today, we believe this is the way we should go. And we'll get back and come back to you with how we do that. We will include the match portion in next year's budget, and then, once Rhonda determines after meetings with Scaled Composite, we will then have a campaign to do that. It's probably about a month away.
Okay, okay. Great job. Learn for Life, thank you for what you do to the community. Thank you for participating. Do you want to introduce the young ladies that were?
Absolutely. So we have Celeste, Damaris, Courtney, and Isaiah, who all participated and thankful they could make it here today. We started, I think, with about 20 students. After we put this project out, we ended with nine that we still have. A couple graduated, so it's difficult, they're working, but I'm thankful that you guys could be here. And do you guys have anything that you would like to say?
I want to hear Isaiah talk again. I think he'd be great on radio.
No, they're not shy, and they've been a huge part of this.
I just want to be very thankful for being a part of this program. I never knew this project, you know, get so big. I remember the first time we's meeting Mr. Cook, I mean, he just said like, hey, all of your ideas, you know, will definitely be taken into consideration, you know? He just wanted us to, you know, bring out anything that comes up in our minds. And I think with that freedom, you know, we just took, we just took it and ran with it. I mean, I had so many great ideas, Salaz, Courtney, Damaris, you know, we all just had so many great ideas, and we just, you know, added it all together to make beautiful things just as that. And, you know, I'm just so very thankful for it. I never thought it'd get this big, so.
Thank you.
You've all done a great job, and the community thanks you, the family thanks you, the city council thanks you, and thank you for taking a step up and making it work. So we appreciate it. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't need a vote on this or anything?
No, we'll bring back the actions for funding.
Okay. City Clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Roger.
My granddaughter.
My granddaughter donated a horse to that family, Owen's family, after he died. She paid $3,000 and gave him her horse.
Great.
I was gonna tell them. Her name was Megan Schaefer. Yeah, I've got good kids. They're kind of embarrassed of me. They say, Grandma, why you gotta go up there and stir up everything? Why didn't you just be quiet?
Where'd you get that hat?
Oh, I had this, and that guy I told you, came last meeting, he looked like Denzel Washington, spitting image of him. And he was here for the committees, you know, the kids we sponsoring. Why, you want one? You want, I'll get you one.
No, I was gonna pay for you to have another one.
Okay, I'm not sure with you yet, Mark. In fact, I'm gonna start out with you right now. You see this? I've got, I've got literature from you and Raj. It's gotta be over 100 bucks worth, and I'm just one person. I would have voted for you anyway, you guys, and you've paid a lot of money. So let's get right to the point here, because it's all not, I don't come without scolding you for something. In the search for government fairness, I would like to ask if each one of you sitting here tonight would have thought you could have been elected if you only had enough money for the $25 filing fee? Others sometimes do not have any meat on their bones. I've concluded for a person to run a fair race for city council, they need a minimum of 10,000 bucks. I've been told by experts it is closer to 80,000. Two prerequisites for matching your opponent is putting up equal signage, which I have down to about $3,000. Also, you must come up with about $5,500 to place your statement in the official election materials pamphlet the city sends to all potential voters. Only two men have put their money where their mouth is in this election. So what do we do about this unequal advantage? Nothing, for this equality, inequality has been going on for centuries. My grandkids say the poor should put up lemonade stands for two years prior to the race and simply get their family and friends to help. One guy panhandles $300 a week, he could almost run if he saves up for a couple years. Wouldn't this be great, a panhandler on the city council? Others told me if we make it easy for anyone to run for office, just think of the crazies that will turn up. No, the truth is, you must have passion, love, help your community, work hard for all the people, and last but not least, it would not hurt if you had a little skin in the game. I have been blessed in a life with much fat. Therefore, next time, those of you that have Republican-Libertarian ideas and believe in smaller government with the eyes of a fiscal hawk, call me, for I may help. But remember, I still have the first dollar I ever made, so it might be hard to get a dollar out of me. But that's important. They've got, Mike, you gotta get in this book. I mean, we don't know what you think, people don't know what you think. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
I got my two cents in again.
Well, good, we appreciate it. Shannon.
Good evening, council, Vice Mayor, staff. I did come to speak on the airshow, just to let you guys know I had had a great time. I just wish I could have stayed longer. I mean, I had a blast. I felt like, I don't think you can feel that patriotic, you know, going to an airshow just does something. I know it does something to me, it's just like, I wish somebody would come and mess with us now, you know what I mean? Just seeing, sorry, I'm getting beside myself right now, but it was very, I felt very passionate when I was there. I was glad to see the people that I did see. I was looking for you, but you had just left, I was told, so, you know, I was like, I'm gonna get them. Okay. The second thing I wanted to say is I'm so happy that you've nominated two more people for my commission, I appreciate it, I really do. Now, maybe we can get some work done.
Good.
So that's all I really wanted to say. You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Michael.
Vice Mayor, council staff, fellow citizens, we had some reports tonight. I'd like to report on the march that was held on the weekend, Saturday, March for Our Lives by the high school students of the Antelope Valley. I was privileged to go to it, and I fully am thrilled with the students that spoke that day. I wanted to let you know that these students believe in our country, they're not anti-gun, they want to improve our society, they want to improve getting guns in the hands of the right people, and they were so articulate. We marched from Heroes Park to Jane Reynolds Park, back to the Boulevard, to AV High School. Now, on the way back, I took it upon myself as a citizen to get close to the front because I was concerned about the security of the students, and in the event there was a problem, I wanted to be up there to help them. And we had a monitor from Eastside High School who was in charge of the whole thing. Another thing I want to point out, the ability and things that the city did for this march are really incredible. I've been in a lot of marches in this town since I've been here for over 10 years, but the city of Lancaster this time outdid themselves, really. I know we had the airshow going on and a lot of other things going on in town, but parking enforcement and the park rangers did a terrific job, low-profile job, and I only saw one sheriff vehicle on Lancaster Boulevard. Security and management was done by the city, and let me tell you, Mark and Jason, it was flawless. It was really a good thing for the city of Lancaster. It was a great event. I am so proud of all those high school students. If I ever had any doubt about the future of this country, I no longer have any doubt. These kids are gonna do a great job for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. David, beat that.
Vice Mayor, council, good evening. Pleasure tonight. When Mr. Drico was up here, I could hardly contain myself. This weekend, I finished the third seminar, the 20-hour seminar from the Alternatives to Violence program, and I just want you to know that this was attended by 20 college students who give their time for free to learn to facilitate this incredible program. Diana Couch trains it, it was started in prisons, it gives people skills, there's young people there, they want to get into Challenger, I didn't know that that was changing, but this is a great resource to add to this program. So I just wanted to let you know that this is, they teach skills, and it was just an incredible, all these kids came back, these students, some of them are 40 years old, I call them kids, but that's what we were doing. So Alternatives to Violence, and I'll talk more with Lee and you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, what's happening on the planning commission?
We have all kinds of interesting things happening. We have the modernization of our many markets happening, it's looking pretty good. They have multiple different places that are wanting to come into the area, several have been approved. They're gonna be nice state-of-the-art facilities that are gonna have car washes and lots of convenience for their customers, so we're looking forward to making that happen.
Good. Thank you for what you guys do.
Thanks for having us there.
Raj? Ken? Angela? Okay. Rhonda, great job, airshow, great job, I mean, it's wonderful. When you can get Michael Reeves to come up here and say what a great city we live in, we've done our job, so. With that, we'll stand adjourned.
And congratulations again, Rhonda, on the award.
Oh, sure. We stand adjourned.